Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are prepared to begin this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. We will move to our public hearings momentarily, but before we do that, one quick item of business to take care of, namely, the minutes from our last meeting in August, excuse me, that would be September. Is there a motion for approval of our September 17th minutes?
Uh, move to approve the minutes on September 17th.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Minutes are approved, and we will move to our public hearing schedule for this evening. Just by way of background, for those who are unfamiliar with our process, as each application is announced from the podium, we will ask a, the applicant or their representative to come forward to the podium, provide their name and address for the record, as well as a brief summary of the application involved. When that presentation is completed, and following any questions from the commission members, we will extend an invitation to the public to come forward, provide comments in favor of the application, and then we will invite those who wish to speak in opposition to the application to do so, also from the podium, providing name and address for the record. And where comments are offered in opposition to the application, we will extend an opportunity to the applicant to respond to those comments made in opposition. So, lots of folks here tonight, it would be helpful to keep comments concise, so that we can move through this evening's agenda, and afford everyone who's attending here tonight the opportunity to speak, if they wish to do so. So with that, can we turn to our first application, please?
Thank you, Mr. Kulik. Commission members, good evening. The first public hearing is our 1843. This is a re-subdivision to combine three properties into one new lot at 1202 and 12 and 1/2 Willis Avenue, and also 959 Emerson Avenue. Basma Musar Bush is the applicant and the owner. It's an, just, all three properties lie within an industrial Class A zoning district. This is a continuation from September 17th. The, our office has received a project site review application for proposed alterations to the building, however, it is incomplete. I did give it back to the applicant, so we would anticipate the revisions and the submittal being made forthcoming. The re-subdivision, the task at hand is about the assembly of land in this application.
So, the, the other document that you mentioned, being returned to the applicant, that will be returned to the office, presumably when it is complete, for routine review by the zoning office, and tonight's action is on the subdivision, re-subdivision only.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that summary, if the applicant is here, come forward, sir, please, and again, your name and address for the record, and then your summary of the proposal.
My name is Joe Mastriani, Mastriani Engineering. I'm representing my client, the owner of the property. As Heather said, this property is bounded by Willis Ave and Emerson Ave and back. And what they have are three parcels, this being one with a building on it, this being a second one, and then there's a strip across the front. My client is looking to renovate the building internally and turn it into a grocery store, and to do so, we have to put the three parcels into one part. And so that's what we're, you know, here for. If, a little more background information, like I said, this is the outline of the building, and access is just from, this is Willis Ave up here. Access is just from Willis Ave, this back here. There's quite a drop from about here down, probably about eight or 10 feet. So access is just here into this. This down here is rendered out to a gentleman who does woodworking, I believe, and he enters and leaves from that side. But all the deliveries, customers, everything else, would be from Willis Ave. There was, I think, a slight miscommunication last time, because a lot of people saw on the thing that said Emerson Ave and Willis Ave, but there's nothing on Emerson. So we had gone through county, and they want to change this to 1202 Willis, if we do get permission to put the whole thing back together. I did, since last time, if I could approach the board. These are just a few of the pictures that were taken, probably a couple of days after the last meeting. Okay. It is aptly named Green Front Grocery, that's why it's the green color. And like I said, that's basically what's there. If you go through the packet, I'm giving you all four sides of the building. At the top of page two, you can see the back of the property. It says rear elevation. And the bottom of page two, that's how close we are to the adjacent house next door. My understanding is that the land bank currently has the two properties next door, and they're looking to get them on the market, I guess. The other pictures are just pictures of the neighborhood, showing what there is, a couple vacant buildings, most of them are on Willis, and a couple on, one or two on Emerson. And that's basically what we've got. That's the presentation. The only thing I'd like to state, on behalf of my client, is that there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and statements that we're doing something to Emerson. We're not doing anything to Emerson, I just want to rehash that. I did provide the chairman with a letter, going through all the comments from last time, I'm not going to go through it now. But we're not doing anything with Emerson. Everything is on Willis. It is zoned properly, it is zoned for this use, and the gentleman wants, like I said, to open up a grocery store for the community. Statements were made that they don't need three grocery stores in the area. I know that's a little bit past the subdivision thing, but my client, who's going to talk here in a second, he checked out one of the grocery stores, and the gentleman sells, basically, I guess, paper products, water, things like that. He's looking to do a full-service vegetables, everything in there, so.
And, and this application is only strictly for the subdivision?
For the subdivision. That's some background information, I think. So that's basically what I've got.
Say your colleague was going to make a presentation as well, or?
Well, he was going to draw it when we get to my second, I'll figure it out.
Got you. Okay, thank you. All right. Let's pause for a quick moment, and see if there are any questions from the commission members on the re-subdivision.
Well, just, Mr. Chairman, just one, a question, since this is a continuation, I want to be clear for the record. So you're saying that if this was done to put the two parcels together?
Three parcels.
This, this, we have a rule, we have a preference, that there not be a building that sits across multiple lots, and we're avoiding that by putting the parcels together.
Well, it is on one lot already. We're going to put parking over here for six cars, okay? And in order to do... Sorry? In order to put the parking over here, and to avoid it looking as a lot just sustaining a parking lot, zoning suggested that we put all three parcels together into one, as opposed to having different parcels, so that's what...
That's the reason for...
Yes.
...putting the parcels together.
And also, he's going to get a little lower on taxes, also. If you have one lot compared to three, you're going to pay a little...
But it, also allows, if you're going to actually create parking and maintain parking...
Yes.
It gonna make sense to do it all in one?
Correct, correct.
And he was, he told us that, again, your focus is on Willis, that there's no loading dock, there's no other reason for trucks or anything to be coming onto Emerson.
There'll be nothing. There's no access to the building. There is a stairwell that goes down, but it's not going to be for customers or anything else. It was just in the building when he purchased it, that's all.
If you know, was there any, even with small trucks, any loading that was done before?
No, my understanding, I did my own research, this building, last it was used, it's been vacant for a while, last it was used, it was a small office building in there, I guess. And downstairs was just storage or whatever. So, there's not going to be anything from Emerson at all going into here. They have room to pull in, small truck's not a big story, you don't need a big truck. So they'll be able to pull in, unload right at the front here, and then just be on their way. Okay? You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward.
Just very quickly, for the record, if the owner is speaking in favor of the application, his comment should be considered as part of the application, because he's the applicant, rather than a separate comment. I'm sure you know, but just for the record.
Makes sense, that was, hence my question earlier. So, go ahead, sir.
My name is Musa Shama. I'm the husband of the landlord. We owned Green Front Market on Avery Ave for 20 years. When we took over the store, we hired two of, of duty police officers, and we paid them $20 an hour each to clean the area from drugs and loitering in front of the store. Yes, the two officers cleaned the area. Nobody dared to stand in front of the store to try to sell or buy drugs in the neighborhood. Kids beyond, kids played in front of the store. It was very safe. My son even grew up with the kids in that neighborhood for 20 years. We never have any ticket for selling beer to minors, or selling cigarettes to underage. We kept our prices down, competing with the big stores like Wegman, Tops, and Price Shopper. And sometimes, we were even cheaper. Of course, the stores like Munchy and Solvay Super Saver didn't like that. We felt, with the people in that area, they are not rich. Most of them are on public assistance. That's why we kept our prices down. After 20 years, I wanted to sell the business and retire. But when my landlord knew I was, wanted to sell, he refused to give me a lease. And nobody will buy the business without a lease. We don't want to leave. Oh, he doesn't want me to leave. Nobody made us close our store, like the lady claims we, they did. And we have no choice but to sell everything next to nothing. We lost a lot of money. Well, we left, and, and the building was empty for three years. My landlord got caught selling drugs and buying, and buying food stamps from the poor people for 50 cents on the dollar. This, they can, they can, this way they can buy beer and cigarettes, instead of buying food for their kids. Well, the city, the city shut down its store, which was called Munchy. Well, Solvay Super Saver took advantage of the situation, and started gouging the people, gouging the poor people with their prices. Since they were the only store in the area, since they were the only store in the area, I met, I met many of my customers on the streets, in the stores, they were begging me to open a store in that area, because of the high prices so-called Super Saver was charging. Well, I bought this building, which was empty for four years, I cleaned it, cleaned the building, and painted it, and put it on the city tax, tax box. Besides that, if I make it a store, we are going to hire two or three people from that area to work in the store. And beside that, it makes, if I make it a store, as usual, we are going, we are going to keep our prices down. My neighbors, my neighbor lives next to that building, told me, he went to the Super Saver to buy a dozen of eggs. He told me he paid $4 for a dozen of eggs. And he told me, he bought a quart of milk. He, he, he paid $3 for a quart of milk. That means $12 a gallon of milk. And for a bottle of water, he paid $2. Besides all that, if we open a store, the people will be going in and out on Willis Ave. The store has nothing to do with Emerson Ave. That includes deliveries, parking, so there will be no extra traffic on Emerson Ave. But we are going to keep our prices down, and we give the people their money's worth. Because we are from the people, for the people. Thank you.
Are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium and provide your comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward, provide your name and address, and your comments. Good evening, counselor.
Uh, how we doing? Chad Ryan, Syracuse City Council, 507 Emerson Ave. If I could ask a question, if the property is on Emerson Ave, how can the Willis Ave entrance be used, and just totally ignore the Emerson Ave side of the building? If that's what's, if that's what the parcel's labeled as? I don't know if I can get that answer right now. But, the, the re-subdivision, again, I'm not here to speak to that, because it is what it is. I just wanted to reinforce the facts that Green Front, which was a brand name in the neighborhood for 20-something years, is synonymous with selling illegal cigarettes, is synonymous with loitering, and is synonymous with trash and debris. Those are issues that I've dealt with on a daily call basis when the store was open. Every police in the city knows it, and every department in the city knows about Green Front. So, why anybody would want to open up a brand name that has nothing but a terrible name, only synonymous with selling illegal Seneca cigarettes, I, I, just, is beyond me. I'd like to speak against this project, and I'm not in favor of this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others who wish to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward, and just a reminder, the application is about the re-subdivision, so if comments could focus on the specific re-subdivision, that would be helpful.
I am a homeowner on the Emerson Ave location. There were comments made with regard to Emerson Ave, and I, I would ask that you review the, the photographs that I have here. Obviously, I'm not a graphic artist, but I did the best I could. This is the, the back end of the premises, as it faces Emerson Ave. You can see the wooded area here, certainly provides a lot of area for people to engage in activities that they don't want to have the public see. There's this opening, there's a building right in the, in the back there, which I'm not sure if it connects with the other building, or it's part of it, but, or if it's, it's separate, because it's not really clear from the plans that I've seen. But in any event, there is the potential for entry through the back. Again, the front of the store can look great, and the back end, we have to look at on Emerson Ave, and deal with any of the people coming in and out. The back part of the lot on Emerson, the trees, you can see them here and here. Okay? The front part of the lot on Willis is right there. Down here, this represents the, the front portion, the little parcel, that's not, I, frankly, I tried to look it up in tax maps, and it was not easily accessible for me. I did a bigger picture here, for you to see what the back of it looks like from Emerson Ave. This is the back part. You can, the way this is drawn, and I, I took this from his, his plans, and just blew it up, from the application that I was able to get a copy of. And you can see the back of this building, and it's, and there's area for parking, vehicles could pull up there, and there's that little door there, people can go in and out. There can be a lot of activities that neighbors aren't going to be happy with. And then here's the, the way the front of the store looks, right here. So I brought this to try to help you to visualize this, particularly when they're claiming that Emerson Ave will have no, will not be impacted at all by this. I, I would submit to you that it's very clear, that Emerson Ave is deeply involved in this, and will certainly be impacted, and it will affect the people who live in the adjoining And, the other visual aid that I brought, the last time I brought you photographs, but this time I brought you kind of a track map, so you can see where all of these enterprises fall within the neighborhood. This is the new improved Green Front, right here, and you can see, right across the street, is the Solvay Super Saver. And then, just down the street a little ways, the Q's Deli Mart. They're all within a very, very short distance of one another. The applicant made some reference to the fact that his prices are going to be lower. And typically, when a new store comes in the neighborhood, you do have lower prices to try to attract the, the customers. But after, when the other stores are forced out of business as a result, then they can raise their prices, and they can really price gouge this whole neighborhood. So, that's something that certainly is of concern to myself and, and the neighbors who reside there. But, but even more significantly, the concerns that we have are with regard to the nature of the business. Mr. Ryan spoke about the reputation of the old Green Front, and why would you want to resurrect it? And he's already painted it the green. It was not green prior.
Just a reminder, if you can focus on the issues relating to the re-subdivision, because the actual project will be considered, their application is in, I believe it'll be considered later.
Whether or not the subdivision takes place, I, I, I think it's all intertwined. So, I, I really am, I really want to focus on that. I'm very concerned about that, for the, the betterment of this neighborhood, and not It was interesting that the comment by Mr. Mastriani was that they're looking to renovate this into a grocery store, but it appears that they've already begun that. If I might approach those of you on the committee, I put together a little packet here, just to illustrate some of the points, and I think they're important things. Is it all ready? Yeah. Each of you. You're welcome. I, most of this material was, material I, I was provided through the internet. There are some materials at the end that I got through a FOIL request. The, the first page here makes reference to, it's on the assessment part of the City of Syracuse website, and it says, "Property Description Report for 959 Emerson to Willis Ave." And it indicates on there that the owners are John W. Taylor III, as well as the applicant here. I'm not sure how relevant that is, for your purposes at this time, but it does seem to suggest that there may be more information that we're not being provided with. I would also note that, when it discusses the sales of this property, on each individual, it does say, in each individual entry, it indicates that it was not an arms-length transaction. With regard to, that's with regard to 959 Emerson Ave. If you go to page seven of the materials, it makes reference to 1202 Willis Ave, and the only owner listed is the applicant in this. And again, it shows a series of transactions that are not arms-length transactions. And I've attached to that, other materials that I got from the city assessment materials. Now, going to page 13 of the materials that I've provided, page 13 of the materials that I provided, it's a, a news article that I was able to print from Syracuse dot com, and it makes reference to the fact that the Green Front Market, 1101 Avery Avenue, on a report that was updated September 12th, 2013, was closed because the inspectors found open and live exterior wiring near the ground, open electrical panels, non-permitted wiring in the basement, non-compliant fire extinguishers, and a properly connected hot water tank, and no exit signs. From the last hearing, when it was suggested that because of the close proximity to the property lines of the other premises, that this could constitute a fire hazard, the applicant's representative sort of shot that down, because it's a brick building. But I would submit that, we have evidence here, that there has been an electrical lapse in his history. He says he's owned the store for 20 years, so certainly within the 2013 period, which is a mere five years ago, he would have been the owner. The pages 15 through 17 are, are a complaint action summary that I received in response to a FOIL request. And with regard to that, the first entry on there, 62314, makes reference to a complaint number from the Syracuse Police Department, DR 14-335862. I was unable to obtain this police report, but there is a summary of it, and it says, "Possession, use, sale, or offer sale any alcoholic beverage in violation of Article 18 of the tax law and/or section 260.2 of the penal law, or of any cigarette or tobacco products in violation of Article 30 of the tax law." The store was found to be in possession of 11,000-plus untaxed cigarettes. The co-owner of the store, whose name has not appeared in any of the materials thus far, Musa Shama, was arrested and charged for possession of said untaxed cigarettes.
If I may just interrupt for one second, I think I can perhaps help move some of these concerns together, along. We did receive a project site review, which is for the alterations of the building and the site. It is incomplete, I have given it back to the applicant. However, there is, under project site review, there is a provision to schedule a public hearing at the optional discretion of the zoning administrator and the city planning commission. to schedule a public hearing at the optional discretion of the zoning administrator and the city planning commission. Perhaps, I, I know that these issues are important to the neighborhood, although tobacco and alcohol are not, they're preempted by the state and not relevant to the re-subdivision per se. I think maybe some advice, and my attorney can confirm this, would be to, if the commission would like to hold a public hearing on the project site review, we could hear the re-subdivision and the site alterations together. And some of the, the movement on site with respect to traffic and physical alteration of the property can be heard at that time. I'm, I'm just throwing out this out there as a suggestion to help address some of the concerns.
So I have a question to that end. What we would, would we hold this hearing open? Or just hold this hearing open, wait till the project site review, application is complete, and then come back to all of these issues and deal with them at the same time?
You could authorize a public hearing for the project site review as it is an optional discretion under your purview. And then you can hear the two together and see the comments from the different city departments relative to their review of the site.
Yes.
Sorry?
Just, just to be clear, if we were to continue to consider the subdivision on its own merits, essentially by the rules that we go by, we're basically trying to decide whether or not the size of the new lot is consistent with other lots in the neighborhood. I mean, that's pretty much what we're constrained to consider. If we were looking at it only by itself?
Correct. Do you also have secret to consider with respect to the, the project?
I think the suggestion about a hearing for the project site review, I think, my judgment is that from our last hearing and some initial comments this evening, those are the comments we might typically expect with project site review. And rather than ask individuals to repeat those comments yet again, I think there's a lot of sense in kind of bringing these two issues together in one public hearing or two hearings held concurrently, where it would be far more appropriate to hear the comments on the operation of the enterprise and so forth in revisions or changes to the site that don't necessarily relate particularly to the re-subdivision application. So Madam Legal Counsel, might you suggest a path forward? If, if I'm hearing some consensus here about that. And what we do this evening, follow through with testimony from speakers this evening, hold the hearing open, and at the November meeting.
Yes, and I would suggest just authorizing, when you come back to the authorizations, just bring this issue up again to add that, as well as this case as a holdover. So right now there are four, so it looks like next, so far next month, there'll be six.
That would be pending a complete project site review application.
Absolutely.
And in time to get comments from the other departments.
Absolutely, and if it were not complete by that time, in that timeframe, it would have to be held yet again for the next, the December meeting.
November. The next meeting is October 29th, so there will be a November.
Oh, right, two November, or October meetings, one November, one December, I think. Okay, thanks for the clarification on that. I think that offers a better use of everyone's time who, among those who have come out to express an interest and a concern about this particular application. So excuse the long interruption in your comments. I think you hear where we're going, so if you wish to conclude your comments this evening, that would be fine. And there'll be, know that there'll be another opportunity later this month, most likely, presuming a complete site, project site application. And, and if you wish to continue, that's fine. But for tonight's purposes, we should probably keep the comments focused pretty tightly on the re-subdivision application.
May I ask you a question with regards to the next phase of this? When the project site review report is available, is that something that we would be notified of, so we would have an opportunity to review it before another hearing? Or is this something that we would just come in here and it would be present at the, the hearing?
We would follow this, I think we would follow the same process, but I defer to my colleagues at the other table in terms of the notification for the public.
Yes, this would be a new public hearing, so everybody who lives within the radius that's entitled to get notification will get notification.
The question I had though is, would we have the opportunity to review that public, that site review report? Would that be available in the next?
There'll be an application. There'll be two public hearings, there'll be companion pieces. You'll get a postcard for both if you're within 400 feet of the affected property. And those are available through our office. And also, we do try to post those online as quickly as possible. The applications online under our webpage and the planning commission's webpage under the city's webpage. And so either way, they will definitely be available if there are public hearings.
Okay. I'm, I'm just going to make a couple of brief points. There's another reference to another DR number with this, the same problem. And if you go through this report, you'll see that there were a number of issues electrical and, and other issues. And it either says no progress, or they're free, on, on page seventeen, it just makes reference to fail, 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 fail. And the last page that I submitted, page eighteen, was something that I obtained from the city with regard to complaints. It includes complaints that people were complaining that appeared that he was working on the premises without a permit. And I think this is in accordance with what Counselor Ryan said, both at this meeting and the prior meeting, that there's a, there's a history of this applicant not complying with the law and the codes in this community. So I'll leave it at that for.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application for a re-subdivision?
I'll leave these posters for you, or do you want for your, you keep a file?
We do keep a file. Do those fit in the file?
You can, you can take those. We, we don't have a physical place to put those, so, but you can bring them back if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So second call, third call. Is there anyone additional who would like to speak in opposition to the re-subdivision application just presented? I see none. I will look to the applicant and see if you wish to comment on comments made in opposition so far.
I'll keep it brief. A lot of what was said was the same thing that was brought up at the last meeting, as I stated before, from the councilman, he started the last meeting by stating that a lot of work had been done over and over, things like that. My client has not gotten any violations from the city. As, as I stated the last meeting, the code enforcement officers have come down because a complaint is filed. Comes down, he said, are you doing A, B, and C? And Musa's like, walk through, do what you want to do. And he finds nothing, he leaves. He said, we have to come down after every complaint. But he gets random complaints by other stores near him, won't mention names. But nothing's ever done, nothing's ever found wrong. And a lot of what the previous lady was saying, I appreciate her, all of her input, a lot of it just doesn't have bearing. She's talking about him owning this building for 20 years, a statement was made, he's owned this building for less than a year. So she's referring to the other Greenpoint, the other place. And as he stated in his statement, which you guys have a copy of, they left, the other gentleman who was his landlord kept running the place, or Kevin, he's the one that got in trouble with the cigarettes and everything. So if we're going to be, you know, trying to assassinate different personalities and everything, okay. But most of what's said is just not true. But we tried to beef it up, and all that was said in the last meeting. So everything else that was said, I'm not going to comment because it doesn't apply to the subdivision. And I already addressed it in the letter to the board.
And as indicated earlier, we will continue to hold this hearing open with the expectation that if not the next meeting, then the meeting thereafter, to continue this, most likely joined by a hearing regarding the site review information. So with that, we will move to our second public hearing of the evening.
Okay, the second public hearing, the applicant has sent us an email we received today that they are not able to attend this evening and would like to delay the public hearing until next time. This was, if anyone is in the audience for SP 1820, this is a special permit for a restaurant at 1224 South Avenue. Nabras Mohammed Hadi is the owner and the applicant, and it lies within a business class A zoning district.
So if there was anyone here regarding this application wishing to speak either for or against the application, we'll provide that opportunity this evening, even though we have not heard the presentation directly from the applicant or the representative. But if you may, took the effort to come down here, we'd love to hear your comments. And we will hold the hearing open so that the applicant can return at the next meeting and make the presentation. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application or against? Please come forward. Please come forward. Just provide your name and address. If you made the effort to come down here tonight, you might as well provide your, share your comments, because who knows, next time may not be as easy for you.
Thank you. My name is Demetis Spears Baldwin, and the address is 1201 South Ave, Syracuse. We are right across from the proposed project. And we are concerned that there is inadequate parking to support their proposal. They are saying they only need three to four parking spaces. However, you're having a food market and coffee shop. There's already a convenience store right next door. And we already deal with debris and transients through our parking lot. We don't want to be liable for any of their patrons parking in our parking spaces or dealing with any of the delivery trucks interrupting our church services, which we have three times a week. And we feel that, you know, just in review of the application, if you're having at a minimum of two employees and you only have three spots, where are your patrons going to park? And that would be directly in our parking lot across the street from them. So that's why we are in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. I see no additional speakers this evening, so we'll hold this hearing open, move to our third hearing tonight.
The next public hearing is SR 1708 M1. This is a site plan review modification to modify the site plan and signage at 881 Van Rensselaer Street. Salt City Enterprises LLC is the owner. Buried Acorn Brewing Company LLC is the applicant, and it lies within a lakefront T5 zoning district.
Okay, sir.
All right, my name is Samuel Kim. I'm one of the owners of Buried Acorn Brewing. It is on 881 Van Rensselaer Street. We applied for, I guess exemption, or exception, I don't, I don't know what the exact verbiage is, but for that and to add a little bit of outdoor seating on the Van Rensselaer side.
Yeah, you can disengage the mic, it might be easier.
So, yeah, we had an existing, I guess, signpost that we wanted to reuse. We initially just wanted it to be temporary, just to let people know that we have opened. But we did get a lot of compliments, so we want to do the right thing and do it the right way and make sure we get the, the exemption, so. And then for the seating outside, it's just three tables on an existing pad that's on the side of the building right there, so.
Okay. Yes, questions?
I have a question of staff, actually. So in our previous approvals, we approved the sign, the wall sign? And was this, whatever this sign is, was this, this was not part of the package previously?
Correct.
Okay. And it's not an allowed sign, or?
Correct. The type.
So ground signs are not allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
Here comes the deliberative process again. Okay, but already existing, there is a post for a ground sign. Is that, is that correct? And that, that's what we're looking at at the property?
The post was existing there, yeah.
The suggestion, though, for staff is that the prior tenant or prior landowner had a post that wasn't ever brought in as part of a site plan review. There's the definitive answer, most likely will work tonight. Okay, no, that's fine, Mr. Kim, I'm just, I'm with them, thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no additional speakers, we'll declare the hearing closed and move for next hearing.
The next public hearing is PR 1831. This is a project site review for facade alterations. And a waiver of parking is necessary as a result. It's at 701 to 703 North Solana Street. Amber Gate Holdings LLC is the owner and applicant. It lies within a commercial class A zoning district.
The applicant is here, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Stevens, I'm the owner of 701, 703 North Solana Street. I'm developing, the, the building's been vacant for about 17 years now, or not abandoned, vacant. I've owned it for a little over three, and we're moving forward as far as developing. It's an historic neighborhood. It's on the corner of North Solana Street in East Division. It has Lock Alley, like the boundary at the back of the property. With respect to the building, it's going to be developed into a mixed-use building with commercial space on the first floor, mixed, or residential use on the second and third floors. The, the back area of the property that borders East Division Street and Lock is where the parking will be, as you can see. The entry is from East Division Street currently. I know from the conversations we've had and feedback from the pre-development meeting and so forth from the zoning office that it's a pretty generous curb cut, so that's going to be narrowed. There's going to be a sidewalk added along Lock Alley. It's currently just gravel. Parts of the sidewalk, I think, along East Division Street will be replaced since it's cracking and has fissures in some parts. With respect to the interior of the lot, there's going to be six spaces. There's going to be some plantings, green space that's put in. Building itself, as far as the upstairs, there's currently an attic above the third floor. The, the rooftop itself has a parapet that kind of runs the perimeter of the building, and it's pitched in the middle. The, because of the water damage and pigeon issues and a lot of other stuff that's gone on, well, it's abandoned for a long time. There are three tresses, two of the tresses are compromised, one's just floating. And so there's been shoring that's been put in to make the property sturdy and, and while we go through this process as far as getting permitting. The plan is to, of course, keep it historic, because I think I said it's in the historic neighborhood. But part of the roof, irrespective of what ultimately is approved or not, just has to come off because of the way, the deterioration of the wood. And so what we'd like to do is lower the rooftop down to the attic level, keep the original part along the front third of the building, and it'll be moved away from the property so that sightlines, you can't really see it from the street. property so that sightlines, you can't really see it from the street level, and that it's not changing the scope of the neighborhood or the character, I should say.
Summer? Okay, good.
I'm happy I have, you're looking at the site design, of course, but there's pictures, drawings of the upper levels.
Let's pause and see if there are questions here.
I see that you've already been to Syracuse Slimer Preservation Board. Is this also a preservation tax credit project, and are you dealing with the State Preservation Office?
It's not. I'm not going that route, no. Sure. Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward.
Hi, my name is David Campbell. I'm president of DAVCO Performance Incorporated. I own a business nearby, several properties on the north side in the general area. In fact, one of them is actually adjacent to the property that Jamie there was talking about developing. Jamie's an excellent neighbor. He's got an excellent plan, from what I've seen. I've been inside the building myself and looked at it. I think he's got very good ideas for the building, and I strongly support the redevelopment of that building. I think it's an important aspect, particularly with the fire that we recently had there. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it did a lot of damage to the historic neighborhood, so what Jamie's bringing here is another good solution to help us move forward with that. I would also mention, too, as an aside, I'm also the president of the Northside Business Partnership. Though I'm not here representing them in that capacity, I feel confident that they would support this as well.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application?
I'm Andrea Wandersey. I am the interim executive director with Nita, and I concur with my colleague Dave that we are in full support of this project. It's part of the Restore New York grant funding, and Jamie's done a terrific job with this. Obviously, it's a critical property for the North Salina Corridor, particularly in light of the fire, obviously, even prior to that. It's great to see this, this corner property being updated, and we have, have full confidence and support of the project.
Thank you very much. Other individuals who wish to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no additional speakers on this application, so we'll close this hearing and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is R-1840. This is a re-subdivision to combine four properties into two new lots at 1115, 1119, 1125 to 1127, and 1135 West Genesee Street. This also includes 319 Liberty Street. Specialty Properties LLC is the owner and applicant, and all the properties lie within a local business class A zoning district.
Heather? And the applicant is here already, it looks like.
Thank you and good evening. My name's Brian Bouchard with CHA Consulting, project engineer, representing the applicant, Specialty Properties LLC, and the owner, Jim Renali, who's also taken on a variety of projects in the area for redevelopment, and this is one of them. He acquired this building, which was in disrepair. It's actually three individual buildings on three individual lots, and has completed some emergency repairs with foundation damage, but ultimately looking to improve the building for the peace program, the Head Start program. And this is particular to the subdivision application, which is necessary. So I'll point out, there's basically a U-shaped building here, but each one of these is three individual lots currently. They are three individual buildings that are separated, although they look as one. And the other building is the old auto body shop, which encompasses the remainder of the property here. So those are the three existing parcels. This easterly portion of the U-shaped building will be demolished, and the other two buildings will create an L shape. They will be connected by a hallway, so that's a play area here and the platform's here. So in combining those two existing buildings and renovating them, along with demolishing this portion of the building, we would look to have this as one contiguous property. In the renovation plans, one thing that came about was the need for windows, the opportunity for natural light, which is a little bit different use than it was previously used as. And within building, a zero lot line configuration allows that window area. So in order to increase the window areas we can provide, we will be adjusting the lot line to accommodate thirty additional feet for this property. So the two new lots would be the Head Start program, but then it's building here with the appropriate windows spacing from the property line, using up the residual land that will remain from the auto body shop.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Staff?
Charlie.
So for the auto body parcel, new parcel, taking the slice off for the daycare doesn't impact any of their parking requirements or anything that we're aware of at this point?
So there is a use variance that encovers that property at 1135, and the applicant is aware of that. They are adjusting that because through the years, the parking configuration actually has differed, much has differed than was approved on the original site plan. However, with heavy-duty automotive repair, there are no parking requirements, so they had more than enough to satisfy the requirements, or the non-re requirements, or the use of the property, shall I say. So the applicant, Clough Harbor, is actually repairing the application to adjust that with the Board of Zoning Appeals, but taking that away doesn't take away required parking. Thank you.
And a related, somewhat related question for staff. So as with at least one or more other applications earlier this evening, this is focused strictly on the proposed re-subdivision here. The question is whether other elements of this project will later come under review through another mechanism.
Well, we already had a project site review that came in, and that was approved because at the time, it didn't need the extra land. So as a result of building code requirements, this is necessary. The project site review will be adjusted administratively to include that extra piece of land as a result.
Thank you.
Answer the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Much.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Right here.
Please, sir, come forward. Provide your name and address and your comments.
My name is Charlie Hollis. I'm the owner of Hollis Funeral Home, which is located at 1105 West Genesee Street. The application, R-1840, obviously is right next door to me, and I want to speak on, in favor of this project because the principal owner, Jimmy Renali, has done a lot of renovation in the west side area where I live. I've been at my location over forty years, and he has done nothing but improve the west side area, whether it's his restaurant, the, what used to be Aurora Metro, now City Electric, whatever he has touched has been a major improvement and a positive force for the west side area that I'm in. The building that's being demolished happens to be right on, well, off my property line, but it actually, it's our little private courtyard, and that was the old Seven Up building, and we're going to miss that brick wall. It was a nice little cozy, quiet little area on West Genesee Street. But now with, talking with Jimmy and James, and James Trasher, we talked about it, and I know we're going to wind up with a satisfactory resolution to that project. So again, I want to speak in favor of this project. I am the most affected by it. And at 319, I was so happy to see that 319 Liberty Street has been included, because 319 Liberty Street was kind of like an offshoot many, many years ago. They used to use it as an egress onto Liberty Street, and then it just got fenced off. But if you went to visit it, it is a disaster, and knowing that Jimmy's going to renovate that and take care of that's only positive for the area. So I thank you for the time, commissioners, and again, I want to speak in favor of this project.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium to do so. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. I see no additional speakers, so we'll close this hearing and move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is R-1844. This is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 500 and 512 Hayawatha Boulevard East. Q's Cars LLC is the owner and applicant, and both properties lie within a commercial class B zoning district.
The applicant is here. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Carlesco. I'm representing for Mike Pierce of Q's Cars. I have my own business impact lighting design and analysis. I am in the process of just assisting him to get the right professionals in the right position and make sure everything is done together as one package. So in speaking, what we're attempting to do is to join the two parcels to provide additional parking for Q's Cars. The application that we'd be putting in is to pave both the lots and to improve the storm drainage. Right now, you get, you know, when the rain comes through and everything else, it washes right through that lot and makes a big mess. So basically, that's all we're attempting to do is to combine the two into one parcel so we can then uniformly pave both of them as one.
Sounds straightforward. Thank you very much. Are there questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. See no additional speakers. We'll declare this hearing closed. Our next.
The last public hearing is R-1845. This is a re-subdivision to realign three properties into three new lots at 94, 96, and 98 Xavier Circle. Morning View LLC is the owner and the applicant, and all properties lie within a residential class A1 zoning district. If the commission recalls, the re-subdivision was part of a planned development with private roads, private streets, and with this re-subdivision, we'd also like the commission to acknowledge the additional building permits for the single-family houses here. We need to keep track of the overall structural coverage minus the streets, which is thirty percent, and so the benefit of a planned development is that one doesn't have to have thirty percent maximum coverage on an individual lot. It's the planned development as a whole. So we have, there are nine additional building permits that are, that the applicant is requesting. So there were thirty-three original. The plans were changed. They came in for a modification with three. Now there are nine more. So we want to be able to keep track of that overall structural coverage and just want the commission to acknowledge that.
So do that again. There were originally thirty-three lots?
Thirty-three lots and thirty-three houses on those individual lots.
Okay.
Then the designs had changed.
To?
To, thirty of them were not moving forward, and they came in with three new ones, three new designs, and the commission heard that as a modification, not heard it, but it was a new business item, to acknowledge the overall structural coverage so that we can keep track. So originally, they had all of their plans in place.
Right.
And, and as plans change and different owners want different designs and materials and other things happen, those thirty-three that were set in that planned development had changed, so.
So we, there were thirty-three lots, and now there are how many lots?
Thirty-three.
There's still thirty-three.
They're just realigning three to make one larger, to bring the physical structure further from the, one of the main roads.
Same number of lots?
Same number of lots.
Still under the, where we're supposed to be with lot coverage?
Yes.
Total lot coverage?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is an intro.
Hi, I'm Bob Dusset, 161 Xavier Circle, and Heather, I think, just explained what we're trying to, this, what all this involves is there's a seven strip, what, strip of land next to one of the lots. We're taking that seven feet and we're allocating it to the three contiguous lots so that we can get the proper setbacks of, between the, between the houses. So we're fortunate that we had that, that strip of land available, and we've got two buyers, and we need this, we need this approval in order to get started building the houses.
Further questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. We have no additional speakers on this application, so we'll declare this hearing closed. Heather, I think that completes our docket of hearings for this evening under hearings, and as we typically do, we return to the top of that list and see if there's consensus for action on these hearings held tonight before we move on to our other items of business in the agenda. So with that, as we look at the agenda, the first two hearings, R-18-43, the re-subdivision on Willis and Emerson, and SP-18-20, the special permit for the restaurant on South Avenue, were held open, so there'll be no action on those two applications this evening. That takes us to the site plan review at Van Rensselaer, SR-17-08M1, where we had the presentation and no speakers. Is there a motion on this application?
I would move approval of the application for the plan alteration, the outdoor seating, but not the ground sign with a negative declaration.
Second, we can open discussion? Okay.
Absolutely.
So my only concern about the ground sign is that it's not allowed at all. So it's not as though it's too big or too small, but ground signs aren't allowed in that location.
For purpose of discussion, in other, in cases in past meetings, we've had past situations where a property owner or a business wanted to have a ground sign, they were in a different setting, either mixed-commercial, but, but this setting does not allow for that kind of a ground sign.
Yeah, I think the, we're recalling some of the same cases, and in those situations, the waiver was for a larger ground sign, although a ground sign was at least allowed.
For me, it's large.
At least, that's what I'm recalling.
I wouldn't have any modification to this motion, but perhaps if staff, if this was to pass, staff might want to have the conversation with the applicant about the, the fact that the simple regulations just, at this time, don't allow for that location to have a ground sign. But we did approve a signed package, as, like we discussed on the record, there was already an approval of two wall signs. Just want to pass on those comments when you speak to the applicant.
There's a little discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is approved. That brings us to PR-18-31, the site review at the 700 block of North Salina Street. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve with a negative declaration and granting the parking waiver for the one space.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Site. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Site review is approved. We are now at the re-subdivision on West Genesee Street and Liberty, R-1840. Is there a motion on this re-subdivision?
Move to approve of the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That re-subdivision is approved. We are now looking at R-1844, the proposed re-subdivision on Hiawatha Boulevard East. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve of the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion's approved. Taking us to the last re-subdivision hearing for the evening, R-1845, the proposed re-subdivision at Xavier Circle. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve of the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That final re-subdivision is also approved. That completes action as we are able to act on the hearings held this evening. We now move into another section of our agenda under the title of minor modifications. And Heather, could you walk us through these, each of these three?
Yes. SP-8359M3 is a special permit modification to a restaurant to modify the elevations and signage at 2835 Erie Boulevard East. This is including painting and exterior change of copy to an existing wall sign and ground sign, and this proposal does not require any new or expanded waivers.
Thank you. Discussion.
Well, I just want to reiterate what, what staff had just told us, that this is in an area zone for the signage that's requested, and that we are looking at a modification as opposed to accepting something just because it exists. It wasn't legal in the other location. I just wanna make that distinction for the record.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the modification to the permit?
Move to approve of the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved.
SP-9134M5 is a special permit modification to a restaurant to modify the site plan, floor plan, and elevation to 313 to 3, I'm sorry, 311 to 313 North Gettys Street. The applicant needs to expand the previously approved vestibule for handicap accessible entrance, and as a result, the site plan is changing. The commission did waive the street line treatment previously, and this actually, the proposal results in a net gain of two parking spaces, and this does not require any new or expanded waivers by the planning commission.
Clarification. The previously approved plan, there was no parking encroaching in the public right-of-way, and I remember extensive discussion about that, and now they're back asking for encroachment in the right-of-way with parking. Correct?
Yes, so if we look at the new site plan.
Yep.
They've moved the, there's like a half of handicap parking in the right-of-way, and then a half of a, two halves of two regular parking spaces in the right-of-way. They've taken out the, they're proposed to take out the lawn area. But I do believe there are, there is a protection against pedestrians walking along the sidewalk and also planters in the right-of-way.
So, so there's no planting strip on the street? I mean, along the curb. There's no public street planting strip along the curb, not, not on the inside of the sidewalk along the curb. I mean, I'm looking at the drawing, and it's just, it's not labeled, but there's a dashed line that implies something, but I can't tell for sure what.
Oh, there are, my recollection, there are planters there, actual physical greenery and plantings.
What is this, 313 North Salina?
No.
I've north, pardon me, my mistake.
Heather, while you're looking.
If you look at, actually, page 210 of your agenda, there is a photograph, so there is a very, there is a large right-of-way there, and there is a mulched area with plantings in the right-of-way, in front of those parking spaces.
This is probably page 16 of your file.
While we're searching, again, I love the history of these things. We had an extensive conversation about the parking and how there'd be that additional parking at the church lot. But I just wanna be clear, staff is saying that now there's a change by making the bathrooms, by making the vestibule ADA compliant, there's, there's going to be a change in the traffic pattern. There's gonna be a change in the room that they need to accommodate the bathroom and then to have these cars, 'cause I see there's a comment about the cars backing out and making sure that there's a safe lane.
It appears the traffic pattern is the same.
Okay.
On both site plans.
But there's a removal of a spot, of one parking spot.
They're gaining two, actually, on the private property.
On the private property.
Yes, yes.
I just remembered this was in a regular parking lot that we tried to put enough, we put the lots together to allow for enough parking for the restaurant on one side of the street, and then they're using another lot as well. That's correct?
Yes, and they are still on, I'm sorry, it's hard to tell which page, but 12 to 14 on the site plan, there is a satellite parking lot across Park Avenue that they will still be using. They did reconfigure parking on the west side of the vestibule towards the top of your site plan from what was previously approved, if that would be.
That's, okay. That's, so that's where they're getting the gain, is what you're saying, if they, if they.
Yes, as well as along the far west, again, on the upper top of the, the site plan on your, in your file, up in this case, it's west, there are 12 spaces that they've increased, they've added a space there.
I apologize, I'm not finding the photo with the planters. Did, does the commission find that?
Yes.
They're not really planters, they're, it's just plantings.
It's, uh.
Okay, it's that.
It's a little fuzzy, but that's what that is.
Okay, so that is actually the spot you're talking about, the curb. Okay, thank you for clearing that up. I was looking for the tall ceramic pots that I think it was planted.
Yes, that's right. It's just plantings.
Do you mind if I look at your, 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 your representation as an example?
Oh, yeah, mhm. Actually, it's already all paved into the public right-of-way, which is unfortunate, which I think predates this, yeah, this is before they built any of that.
Other questions for purposes of clarification?
I'll help you with any.
Is there a motion? For action one way or the other on this?
I'm moved to approve the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So the permit, special permit modification is approved. We have one more item under this section of our agenda, Heather.
SP-0024M2 is a special permit modification to a restaurant. This is to modify the floor plan and signage at 216 Walton Street, and this does not necessitate any new or expanded waivers from the City of Syracuse zoning rules and regulations. They originally had wanted live entertainment, but they have withdrawn that request. They're making minor revisions to the kitchen area and the lower level, relocating the staircase, and changing the copy to an existing projecting sign.
And the sign, proposed sign has been through the Landmark Preservation Board?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions for clarification on this special permit modification? Is there a motion, one way or the other?
Move to approve of the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That special permit modification is approved. We have another section in our agenda for modification considerations. Looks like one item.
Yes, this is a consideration on whether or not this is a substantial modification or substantial change, for you to decide if you want a public hearing. They're requesting to modify the elevations and signage for a special permit on a property at 130 Walton. This is SP-1319M1, a special permit modification to a restaurant. The expanded scope of work includes replacing an existing awning with signage and maintaining a two-square-foot open sign. So it would be the, the projecting sign, double-sided, five-square-foot projecting sign, and two-square-foot window sign. So that would be the expanded waiver from what you had previously approved.
And the only modification to the outside others are just changing paint color. There, there's no physical alterations to the facade?
Correct.
And the preservation board signed off on this one as well?
Yes.
What's the consensus of the commission in terms of a hearing?
I think it's fairly modest, physical changes, but it warrants a public hearing.
Right. I think it's really more in the replacement with a minor modification. I would move to approve the negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The special permit modification is approved. We have one more section, which is new business, before we get to our authorizations for next meeting.
Z.
It looks like there's just one item under this new business category.
Yes, Z-2214M1. This is a project plan modification for the stadium crown truss roof replacement. It's 100 University Place, also known as 905 to 925 Irving Avenue. Syracuse University is the owner and the applicant, and this lies within a planned institutional zoning district. And the proposal and scope of work includes removing the 39-year-old air-supported dome roof system, installing a combination rigid panel and tension membrane roof assembly. This is supported by a steel crown truss structure, which is constructed atop the existing stadium concrete ring wall per the plans in your agenda. The last project planned to construct the stadium was on December 17, 1979, and the dome roof was actually replaced between then and now. The law department has also advised us that the proposal is a type-two action under SIKR. And this does not alter the overall district plan or the sub-district number three plan in any way.
Replacement in kind. All other conditions of the original 1979 approval remain intact, correct?
Yes, based on the application, it doesn't look like any of the use is changing or anything within that original approval, so, yes.
Okay, just a new, a new roof overhead. Okay, with that understanding, is there a motion for approval of this project review modification?
Just clarification, is it type-two? We don't need to do declaration?
You should declare it as a type-two declaration, yes.
Which is not a negative declaration, is this a type-two?
Yes.
So I move approval, recognizing this is a type-two action under SIKR.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? This is approved. We now move to authorization for public hearings for the next mission, mission meeting in October, the 29th. We have five applications listed for new hearings. We have two hearings carried over from this evening. That'll bring us to a total of.
As well as hearing the site plan for that first hearing.
Yes, thank you very much for that clarification.
And that's if the application comes in completely.
As complete, yes.
If it doesn't, will we then hold this, the re-subdivision one off, off the agenda then?
It won't be publicized.
Okay.
Makes sense. So, yeah, six, given what we acted on tonight, plus the two carryovers. So that gives us a total of eight. Are there any others that are requiring approval for the October 29th meeting?
Oh, no, no others.
Okay. If not, is there a motion to authorize those public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Is there any other business we need to conduct this evening before adjournment? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We adjourn until the 29th of October.